Good evening. We'll call the Board meeting District 128 for February 24th to order. We'll start with a roll call. I mean, I mean a pledge of allegiance and then we'll have a roll call. All right.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Carol, roll call, please.
Jim Batson.
Here.
Kara Benjamin. Don Carmichael.
Here.
Cara Drumke. Lisa Hessel.
Here.
Middleish Cotwell.
Yeah.
Sonalko Carney.
Here.
Okay, that everybody's here. I'm gonna run through the agenda real quick for action. We have some very exciting news that we're gonna start with. We'll get back to that shortly. And then for communication, we have the LHS Youth Connect Council presentation. We'll have an invitation for public comment. We'll have teacher union report, ESP union report, student school board rep reports. We got a couple FOIA requests, superintendent's report, and then we'll move into the consent vote agenda. Those are all things that have been previously discussed and/or our regular routine things that we vote on in one action. And then for action, we have an employment of employees. We have some educational tour requests. We're going through 10 and 12 month administrative contract renewals. The FY24 audited financial reports. Dan will give us an update on that. Some bid approvals for paving and netting and yearbook contract. And then we'll have an update in information section on campus safety, mid-year financial review, five-year financial projections. So Dan's gonna be busy tonight. Board comments and events, IASB report. I just have a couple of quick things. CEDOL report, anything Kara? Okay, nothing for CEDOL. And then we'll review some future agenda items. There will be no closed session or anything tonight, so let's get to it. So first of all, it's my privilege, do we have our guest on the horn? It's my privilege to present Dr. Mark Schaefer. There he is. As a recommendation to become the next superintendent for Community High School District 128. So let's, first of all, let's just get the formality out of the way so we know he's officially here. So can I have a motion to approve the contract as presented for Dr. Mark Schaefer as D128 superintendent, beginning July 1st, 2025?
Hessel, so moved.
Carmichael, second.
Okay, did we have a roll call?
Benjamin. Aye. Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumke.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye. And as you notice, that was unanimous. So I just have a couple of things I wanted to read here. We're very excited to welcome Dr. Schaefer back to Illinois as the new superintendent of District 128. Dr. Schaefer's credentials and experience speaks for itself, but his leadership and respect for input from others and collaboration was so apparent on her visits. His extensive experience as an educator, administrator, and superintendent makes him well-equipped to lead our district. He shares our unwavering commitment to continue to provide outstanding educational opportunities for all our students. I first want to take an opportunity to thank the literally hundreds of people who contributed to this selection process, whether it was input from focus groups and surveys used to develop our leadership profile, the great work that Dr. Joe Porto and Dr. Phil is here. Dr. Phil Erhardt is back here, joining us, and the entire BWP team who assisted us with this process. I'd like to thank the other candidates that stepped forward, a very impressive group of candidates, the district staff who helped navigate this process, the stakeholder committees that, the committee that was formed so that we could receive confidential but important feedback from a group of very significant stakeholders. And I especially want to express my gratitude to my colleagues on the board here for the many hours of deliberating, interviewing, and eventually coming to consensus on this terrific leader who will take the district to even higher levels. I've been involved in a number of these sorts of hiring processes, and I will say that this is probably the most effective one I've ever witnessed. And I think the result demonstrates the success of this project, that this process. Let me just share a few comments from some of the notes that I saw from people that had the opportunity to meet with Dr. Schaefer. He is student-focused. He wants what's best for kids. His integrity is his highest value. He's passionate and humble. He owns and learns from his own mistake. Did I say he's student-focused? Dr. Schaefer is a servant leader who respects all opinions, seeks lots of input. He is real. He is authentic. Those are just some of the comments that I, from the notes that I saw. So without further delay, Dr. Schaefer has joined us remotely, so I'd like to introduce Dr. Mark Schaefer.
So good evening, Board of Education members, as well as all who are gathered here this evening. I'm incredibly proud, honored, and humbled to be joining Community High School District 128. This district is a shining example of a world-class education system driven by its exceptional students, dedicated staff, and a supportive, engaged community. I am excited and energized to continue building on the strong traditions of excellence in student achievement, outcomes, and experiences, while also inspiring every student to be daring in their pursuits. There's so much to look forward to. Can't wait to be part of it all. I look forward to joining you in person at your next meeting on March 10th. Thank you again for your trust and confidence in me. I'm so excited and honored to be your next superintendent. Thank you so very much.
Need the other board members have any comments or?
We're glad to have you aboard. Yeah, we're thrilled.
Welcome.
Yes, welcome.
We look forward to your upcoming visit and we'll let you get back to your, what you're taking care of there at the conference, so have a good one.
Thank you again. Thank you.
So that's very exciting news for our district. We're super pleased to bring Mark on and looking forward to his leadership in the coming years. All right, next on the agenda, under communication, Libertyville High School Youth Connect Council presentation.
Hey there. I am Brenda Nelson, and I am the Prevention and Wellness Program Coordinator at LHS. And I am the proud sponsor of the Youth Connect Council, which we call YCC. It's been in existence since 2019. And keywords are HB2951. And they're gonna tell you more about that and what's behind it. So we're gonna have them each come and introduce themselves first, so you just kinda know who they are, and then they're each gonna come, they'll each get up and say their part. So just wanna line up and quickly introduce yourself.
I'm Cecily. I'm a junior.
I'm Maggie. I'm a sophomore.
I'm Victoria. I'm also a sophomore.
I'm Caitlin. I'm a sophomore.
Benjamin, I'm a senior.
I'm Tyler, and I'm a sophomore.
When it's your turn to speak, feel free to pull the microphone down to a comfortable level.
Okay, so YCC, or Youth Connect Council, is a committee of Libertyville Youth Connect, or Libertyville Connect Coalition. Libertyville Connect Coalition advocates for positive youth mental health and a substance-free lifestyle by educating, empowering, and engaging within our community. We work, or Youth Connect Council works to engage with local and state representatives and government regarding issues impacting youth well-being, particularly relating to youth mental health and substance prevention.
District 128's start time is 8:45, and this is right in line with the best practice as according to leading sleep researchers and adolescent neuroscience. However, unfortunately, the average school's start time for schools all across America is 7:30 a.m., which is an outdated practice.
Adolescent circadian rhythm fall two hours later than children and adults. It was determined by Mary Karksekodan, the pioneer researcher on adolescent sleep, that puberty bumps sleep patterns to approximately 11:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m.
With start times of 7:30 a.m., it's nearly impossible for high school students to get adequate amounts of sleep, leaving them depleted and likely to underperform both mentally and physically, and also impacting their stress levels.
On average, teenagers get around seven hours of sleep each night, meaning they fall far short of their recommended eight to 10 hours. As high school students enter a phase of rapid mental and physical development, getting adequate sleep is key to improving focus, academic performance, athletic performance, and overall health. Having a school start time of 8:45 a.m. or later would allow students to get the rest they need and ultimately help students dive in and out of school.
A similar bill has already been passed in the states of California and Florida, where high school start times are mandated to be no earlier than 8:30 a.m. In a study by the American Academic, or American Academy of Pediatrics, found that compared to schools whose students, or compared for schools that started from between 8:00 a.m. and 8:30 a.m., students whose schools started between 8:30 a.m. and 9:00 a.m. had better attendance, less tardiness, fewer car crashes, and overall better academic performance. Clearly, later start times are better for the students, which is what it's all about.
In March, five YCC members will be traveling down to Springfield to meet with the Education Committee in the House of Representatives, as well as other legislators to advocate for House Bill 2951. Laura Favor Diaz, our state representative, created this bill on our behalf, and it's a bill that proposes a high school start time no earlier than 8:45 for schools in Illinois. We'd love to have your full support on this bill. And lastly, we'd just like to say thank you to the D128 Board of Education. In 2018, D128 changed its start time from 7:30 a.m. to 8:45 a.m., allowing all D128 students the benefit of better sleep. With better sleep, we can perform better academically, physically, and have improved mental health. So we just wanna say thank you.
Thank you so much for that presentation. I know it's gonna be an exciting trip to be able to meet with the legislators. I'd like to get some more information from you at some point in time over the next couple of months, if you can send it over to the district office or something. The Illinois Association of School Boards actually has a process where we advocate for certain legislation, and we're coming up on the timeframe when we would submit those recommendations to the Illinois Association of School Boards and all the, the school districts around the state vote on those to be, you know, advocated for on our behalf. So I'd love to be able to put that through as something that we would advocate for on your behalf and try to get the Association of School Boards to do so as well. So we'll hit them, you know, from multiple angles. We'll drum up the business. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions for the board?
I'm always so impressed when our students come to present. Thank you for that.
So I just have a administrative question. So if this were to pass and we were to have this bill, this law, would that affect dismissal times as well in sports? Is that a part of the bill?
So high schools would be given a timeframe like by 2027. Like this bill in California is by 2026 is when schools have to make this change. So they're given this timeframe to be able to figure out a plan and implement what's best for them. So yes, likely this would affect the, the times of sports and dismissal times, but this, they're given time to make these changes and figure out what's best for, for each district and each school.
Thank you so much for presenting. I, I was the parent of a sophomore in 2018, so got to see the difference between 2017 and 18 and 19. It, it was a, a really good decision to give them the extra time. So thank you for taking the lead on this.
I know it improved the performance of the Libertyville principal at the time as well. So, but the other thing is if, in terms of the end time, it would, I, I would see it as an advantage to our district because as our athletes well know, because we start later, we also get out a little later at 3:25. And a lot of other high schools get out a little earlier, 2:45 or 3 o'clock, and sometimes that makes it a challenge for our athletic events. And we have to leave schools sometimes a little bit early in the eighth period. So if all high schools in Illinois move to a later time, it would probably bring more consistency to when extracurriculars after school would start.
That's what I was thinking. Level the playing field.
And also, just on behalf of our district, State Representative Diaz was going to come tonight to be with the students, but there's an illness in her family tonight, so she could not attend. But I just wanted to say thank you to her for her advocacy across the state for our teens and their mental health.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for coming out and presenting. It's very important stuff. Good luck. Okay, next on the agenda, invitation for public comment. We have Socrates, if you'll step up?
So also, as a parent of multiple aged children, that time shift helped my household as well. So D73 starts about an hour earlier, and that was, that was very helpful. One thing I heard about this new superintendent, sounds like what we had in Dr. Herman. One thing I did not hear, to help hire him is, does he have humor? Is he, so I don't know. Hopefully, he has some humor, because all the credentials are very similar from what I heard today and obviously what Dr. Herman had. So thank you for my three minutes. I think I've asked you in the past to try to move away from that. It kinda chills speech, you know, the three minutes. Not everybody's comfortable getting up here, and especially when you shut the mic on people. It's very unattractive. What if, what if I had a speech impediment? You know, there's people out there that probably have speech impediments that are scared to come up here and actually engage with you all. So Dr. Batson, I ask you again to rethink that. I know today's meeting is very long, so, and I understand where the three minute comes from, but just keep that in mind. The reason I'm here is for four, well, three things. The bathroom, DEI, and I would like to, maybe one of you would have the courage and dare to apologize at this year's graduation for how children were treated during the pandemic, for them to be able to play sports, as they had to test and be treated as if they had some kind of disease. So please keep that in mind. Maybe one of you will have the gall and the courage as you get up there with your robes and address each other as doctors. I've asked for this two years ago. Maybe this will be the year. This is the last graduating class that endured that discrimination. The, the bathroom situation here, there's a, I know, I was, came to light that there's an all-female bathroom and an all-gender bathroom inside. That is not very transparent. Title IX does not address gender identity. Title IX was here to protect you, 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 and all the women in this room, not for people that, for whatever reason, feel that they should also have the same privileges. And I'm not gonna take anything away from that population. I understand they're having a difficult time already as it is, but don't do it off the backs of our women and girls in this building. I would like, I emailed all of you, and I think Dr. Gilliam addressed that. It's not about human, uh, human rights, Illinois human rights, Trump being, Trump's Title IX. What about the women's human rights? Do these women, girls wanna walk into a female bathroom and then see someone that, you know, is a male? How about those rights? So please, I'm, the single spaces, all-gender, I'm not talking about those. I'm talking about the one where there's an all-gender bathroom inside the female bathroom. I would love to see that sign removed, and I think that spaces were probably for people with physical disabilities. It's not fair to them either, right? Those, that building was, those bathrooms were probably put in place to satisfy some kinda ADA requirement. So now they have to share that with the all-gender people. So it, just to be clear, I think, Dr. Gilliam, you understand what I'm talking about, which bathroom it is, right? It's within the female bathroom. To me, a female bathroom starts at the door, not at the stall. I know there's a couple of contracts that are gonna be renewed.
And we're at your three minutes, so if you can wrap up. Thank you.
There's a couple of contracts that will be renewed today. I highly recommend you do not do that. They were created under Dr. Herman, and I don't wanna take any food from anyone's table, but maybe Dr. Varne could be used somewhere else to do something better, because these positions were created here to help some kids, and the metrics are just not reflecting that. The only people making out are the people that got hired in salary positions. Dr. Batson, thank you for giving me some time, and I really appreciate all of your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the board?
Sometimes I come here with a prepared statement. Sometimes I don't come here to speak at all. But it seems like every time I come here, there's something new that I wanna talk about. Tonight, I would do wanna say something that I find really good about this district, and it has to do with, as I've mentioned before, the teachers, I think, have been the glue that held a lot of things together here the last four years. Secondly, I wanna talk about how I think the deans do an exceptional job here. I think the principals have done a good job. I'm happy that Andrew Young is coming into the role to help backfill Dr. G's position. I've had personal experiences of working with all of them. High school is teenagers. Anybody in here that's a parent knows that teenagers are not easy. And all I can say is, when you have 3,600 teenagers in a building, 1,500, 1,800 and two buildings, it's not easy for the teachers. It's not easy for the deans, and there's a lot of things that go along with it. So I think it's really important, we as parents, understand that it's hard enough for us with two kids. Just think how hard it is for the teachers, the administrators, the deans, the counselors. Counselors, I forgot to mention the counselors. Had some great experiences with all of them, so I want to say thank you again to all of those people, because I think it's an exceptional job here in this school, and they're the ones that have helped the kids the most. So with that said, I want to move on to one other thing. Socrates touched on it a little bit. I think the employment of employees, the consent agenda on some of the employment contracts, I think can be pulled off the consent agenda and be reevaluated. There are some shifting sands in the federal government right now that are taking place, potentially resulting in this district losing its federal funding. And it can be up to 8%. If you have $100 million budget, we could be $8 million in the hole without that federal funding. So I think the consent agenda has, for those, employment of employees needs to be pulled off the agenda tonight and has to be reevaluated as some of these things get evaluated further by the legal side of it, because right now, there are some challenges with that. And if we don't adhere to that, we can lose federal funding. Other than that, I just wanna say thank you, everybody, teachers, administrators, counselors. Done a good job. These kids aren't easy. Our kids aren't easy. We have teenagers. You guys got 3,600 of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on. Teacher union report. Monica, order.
Good evening. I am Jason Rush, Vernon Hills High School Applied Technology Teacher, Libertyville resident, and the D128 Union Building Representative for Vernon Hills High School. My union message tonight is about the edX Professional Development Day that took place Friday, February 14th at Libertyville High School. I'm certain I won't be the only person who speaks about edX tonight. When you assemble the collective expertise of our D128 Teachers Union, our educational support personnel, and building and district administration to offer four 40-minute sessions, you get a smorgasbord of practical, intellectual, and entertaining professional development worth mentioning more than once, as you'll probably hear tonight. A few example titles of the presentations are as follows. "How to Leverage Differentiation to Encourage Belonging" by Vernon Hills Alyssa Gahn. "Engage, Explore, Excel: The Power of Classroom, of Classroom Technology in Student Learning" by LHS's John Taylor and Lisa Davis. "Dispatches from a Screen-Free Classroom" by Vernon Hills Ellen Macias. And finally, "Engaging the Home Front" by LHS's Danilo Sutic. This is only four examples of the 55 presentations by over 80 presenters curated by the LHS and VHHS instructional coaches. Beyond the impressive number of sessions, what really makes edX remarkable is the collaborative spirit that filled the day around the District 128 theme of belief and belonging. Teachers, support staff, and administrators share the expertise, share their expertise, and engage in meaningful discussions about improving our practices, supporting our students and learning for the sake of broadening our personal horizons. Shout out to our ESP brothers and sisters, who by my anecdotal assessment, presented and shared their knowledge at a greater rate than I can remember at this edX event since 2017. There seem to be more opportunities than ever for ESP to broaden their professional knowledge, in my opinion. As I mentioned last year, these sessions provide not only professional development, but an opportunity to stretch our intellectual muscles. I, an applied tech teacher, made sure to visit LHS Social Studies Teachers Regina Adoscu and Paul LaCarroche session about the origins of the Armenian genocide. Did you know the blueprint for the Second World War Holocaust was written by the perpetrators of the Armenian genocide? I do know. To conclude, the D128 2025 edX was excellent. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. I've heard many, many good things about that. I only wish I could have attended, but I was out of town taking care of some family business, but I heard it was very excellent, so thank you.
If I may, that's some of the best professional development available. Our teachers teaching our teachers, and I would strongly encourage the district to continue that practice. And beyond that, let's have our teachers going to national conferences, bringing those things to everyone else.
I would support that as well. Next up, the Educational Support Professionals Union report. We have somebody here? No? Okay. I'm sure they probably would have said something about edX as well, because their participation's very important as well. So, okay, we'll move on. Student School Board Representatives, and you're all here, so take it away.
Hello. The LHS Senior Student Council organized an amazing dodgeball tournament fundraiser on Sunday, February 9th. The friendly and competitive competition consisted of 75 seniors and seven teams of eight to 10 players. Each team had a creative name and a captain to represent them. The event was open to exclusively seniors, allowing seniors to have fun while fighting for a cause. Many students at Libertyville took this tournament very, very seriously. Lucas Kresiminski, a senior at LHS, passionately stated that that dodgeball tournament, tournament wasn't just a game. It was a moment I'll never forget. Taking second place wasn't a loss. It was proof of everything my team and I poured into it. Every throw, every dodge, every second on that court was electric. The energy, the competition, the pure joy of playing, it all reminded me of why I love pushing myself. Winning would have been great, but the real victory was the experience itself. Beyond the simple fun of the competition, the tournament had a significant charitable component. Each player who participated in the tournament was required to donate a coat or contribute $5. This allowed students to not only enjoy the spirit of the game, as well as contribute to a meaningful cause, reinforcing the senior class's commitment to service. This event was the culmination of a successful campaign that resulted in nearly 200 coats being collected for the Chicago Bears 36 Annual Coat Drive in partnership with Dua Osco, the Salvation Army, and Sureway Movers. Overall, the senior class dodgeball tournament was a major success. It combined school spirit and service, allowing it to be a fun and charitable event.
Good evening, everyone. I'm sorry I couldn't be here at last month's meeting due to being sick. As the winter sports slowly come to an end, students and coaches are excited for the upcoming spring sports that are starting soon. LHS has a long list of spring sports, all of which include girls' badminton, baseball, boys' and girls' lacrosse, girls' soccer, softball, boys' tennis, girls' and boys' track and field, boys' volleyball, and girls' and boys' water polo. Majority of the spring sports run from the end of February until mid-May, with some exceptions. Girls' track and field has been having offseason lifts since returning to school from winter break, and they had their and they had their first meet at Lakes on February twenty-second and will have their second meet this Saturday at Wheeling High School. Claire Erdman, a senior captain on girls track and field, is excited that track has started but feeling sentimental towards it being her last year competing. They're stated that the practice hugely consists of track workouts, field event practices, mobility, cycling, stairs, sprint work, out and backs, and then specialized event practices. Girls water polo is also getting ready for their season to start soon. The first official day for them is March third with games as soon as March tenth against Hershey. As predicted, many of the spring sports are excited for the warmer weather to come. With many of the sports like baseball, softball and soccer only having practices and games outside, the warmer weather makes it more enjoyable for both the coach and athlete to have a more productive practice. Let's all wish these athletes and coaches good luck on their upcoming season and many victories for all of them. Thank you.
Good evening. Today I will be discussing the Winter Dance, which took place this past weekend on Saturday. At the dance, a large variety of activities were available to the students who attended. Apart from the dancing, students could play board games, watch a student voted movie, participate in the silent disco, play video games and more. Of the activities outside of the main gym, the silent disco seemed to be the most popular, giving students headphones that play different music on different channels. One freshman says, "It was cool that the color of the headphones corresponded with the channel you were listening to because it made it really easy to listen to the same music as your friends." Students also enjoyed the smaller details that enhanced mosh pit, such as the confetti cannons and the inflatable spheres that were passed around during songs. Overall, the dance seemed to get many positive opinions. But compared to homecoming, the Winter Dance tends to normally have a lower number of students who attend. This year, the trend stuck and many of those who did come left after about an hour. One senior says that the reason that students may be leaving early is due to the fact that the DJ doesn't always deliver the music to the students in ways that are attractive to them. Since, since many students make the choice to leave or stay, depending on how many people are still there, students predict that if the DJ were to focus more on choosing parts of the songs that students most want to hear and then transitioning into a new song after that part is over, more students would be inclined to stay for longer. In general, LHS does a wonderful job of providing students with a memorable winter dance. And if we continue to focus on ways to encourage students to attend and stay, the Winter Dance will definitely grow in its popularity.
Good evening, everyone. This month Vernon Hills has been celebrating success after success. First, last Friday Cougars got to celebrate another round of the Cougar Class Act Awards. Sitting in on this event, I heard so many inspiring students' stories about how students are impacting their community. Between students being awarded for creating successful non-process and speaking to large groups of prospective students to helping lighten classroom atmospheres, our students are certainly making a very positive impact. Speaking of making an impact, Vernon Hills recently hosted a blood drive allowing students and staff to donate blood. In total, we raised sixty-five units of blood, which will in turn help many patients. Next, in honor of Black History Month, Vernon Hills has been celebrating the work of black figures by sharing their stories each morning. Then each Friday, a raffle trivia event is hosted to give classrooms the chance to show what they've learned. A random classroom is called, and if they get the question correct, they earn mini cakes. So far, Miss Black and Mr. Prosise have each won. This serves as a great way to build a bit of friendly competition among classes and teach about the amazing contributions of these figures. Finally, the Winter Play was held earlier this month. The play took place over three days. And regarding the experience, senior Sophia Koenig and Lucas Chaukson said that it was good. People thought it was really funny, which was their point and their intent, as they wanted to make people laugh. Additionally, they said that the rehearsal process was fun, entertaining and allowed them to get to know each other more. That's all for me tonight, and let's turn it over to Dani.
Hello, everyone. I'm excited to start by sharing things that have been occurring in the fine arts at VHS thus far in February. Beginning with the band concert that was canceled on Wednesday, February twelve because of the heavy snow. Mr. Sundell, the band director who is retiring this year, resolved the problem by making the winter concert virtual the following day for families and live for students. It has not been virtual since the COVID pandemic. Additionally, in the music department, we had the ILMEA take place this weekend for choir. Students sang in either group or solo or both and then were given corrections by the judges. And they were given the opportunity to incorporate the corrections and improve during the competition. Sophomore Mandy Miller in Honors Choir said that my experience was really good and I liked getting corrections from the judges as it really helped me improve on the piece I performed. Furthermore, some Cougars explored careers in health sciences through a half-day experience that students signed up for through SchoolLinks. Senior Catherine Din found it fascinating to touch a real cadaver and explore different career options within health sciences. Finally, this weekend Vernon Hills hosted its Candyland themed Winter Dance. Spirit Week featured fun spirit days like PJ Day and Rainbow Rush. The assembly on Friday was a hit. There was a mass singer competition between teachers Mr. Smith, Mrs. Reddick and Mrs. Sancho, and also a student staff basketball game where the teachers won sixteen to fourteen against a student team, iSpice. About one-third of the school attended the dance itself with seniors enjoying a tribute video made by Student Council exec member Livitron. The music was better than in past years, though it was a noticeable lack of sophomores at the dance. Still, everyone had a great time and now seniors are looking forward to prom, passing it on to Griffin.
Hello, everybody. I'm pleased to announce that Vernon Hills has had quite the month for sports-related feats. To start, we have a wrestler, Ilya, who placed fourth in their weight class. In addition to wrestling, gymnastics had state. Sophomore Maya placed third all-around and senior Livy placed third in vault and second all-around. Lastly, our boys swim team was CSL North Champions. For now, the second time in a row. We have a multitude of swimmers hanging down to stay, including Cody, Will Blackmore, Yuri Pluskin, Will Rendall and Dan Burke. Best of luck to our swimmers. Similarly to sports, this month was packed in terms of clubs and events. Animal Welfare Club had their first meeting and they have quite a few events planned and can't wait to get involved in the community. Likewise, Mock Trial Club is planning their first trial and I must say it's looking to be an interesting experience. FMPA had a sheepart dice section lab today, which was an exciting experience to have after doing such in anatomy one. Flag this month introduced their exec board. PPA is prepping for state. And Law Enforcement Club had a cybercrime specialist come and talk to students. This month has been packed. And I'm so glad that I've had the chance to attend a majority of these meetings. Vernon Hills is truly honored to have this many experiences to offer its students. Thank you, and that's all for Vernon Hills tonight.
Wow, jam-packed this month. That's great, thank you. Any questions or comments?
Nice job.
I think the, you know, the silent disco thing, I think there might be like some kind of sociology kind of research that could be done as the lights change and people move. You know, there's got to be some kind of, anyway, I digress. All right, moving on. Foya requests? Anything to note on those? Pretty typical Foya requests. So we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
I am happy to share the following good news from District one twenty eight. First, congratulations to the following D one twenty eight seniors named National Merit Finalists. From Libertyville, Maya Anderson, Alexander Brown, Ahand Day, Nina Dogadalski, Hannah Corian, Hayden Mazino and Alan Wang. From Vernon Hills, Kaylee Gumminter, Laura Cashadova, Lakshin Nar, Christina Samanova and Madeline Wright. Congratulations. Next, five District one twenty eight students were recognized at last month's Illinois Council for Exceptional Children Star Awards Celebration. The Star Awards recognize students in North Cook and Lake County who are nominated by their staff for demonstrating growth or excellence in the areas of technology, transition work, academics, self-advocacy, artist skills, school and community and social emotional learning. Congratulations to D one twenty eight award recipients, Abigail Nowaki, Charles Halperin, Christopher Morrison, Hannah Creach and Kyle Ellen. Next, District one twenty eight Special Olympics athletes had amazing snow shoeing performances at this month's state Winter Games in Galena. The athletes won the following honors in their events. Libby Carston, gold and bronze. Rishi Aaron, fifth place. Ben Brumer, bronze and sixth place. Noah Hewitt, two silvers. Abigail Nowaki, gold and silver. And finally, last month representatives from the D one twenty eight Foundation for Learning joined us to share information about their annual one twenty eight Giving Campaign. I'm happy to share that generous supporters helped the foundation reach ninety-seven percent of its goal and raised twelve thousand four hundred and thirty-two dollars in this year's campaign. Thank you to everyone for your support that will go towards this year's daring innovation grants, supporting students in needs and senior scholarships. And that, Mr. President, is the superintendent's good news report.
Thank you. Moving on, consent vote agenda. Again, these are items that have been previously discussed in committee and/or routine items every month. Anyone have anything that we want to pull out and consider separately?
Do we have another presentation in the superintendent's report or?
I'm sorry. I shouldn't have done that. I did not do that well.
Okay.
I just hogged the microphone here. We do have an MTSS report. My apologies, Mr. President.
No, no problem.
I will turn this over to the MTSS experts. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much. We just wanted to give a brief update tonight about our ongoing MTSS work. This is just a brief summary of the information that was sent to you in your board packet. And so tonight, we're just going to give you a quick overview. As you'll likely recall, in October, we provided the board with an update about our MTSS work, our student academic interventions, student grades at that time, and the number of students who had dropped down from AP and honors courses. Now that first semester has concluded, we can better assess the performance of our students and the impact that our interventions and placement initiatives had upon student outcomes. And we'll explain how this is influencing the thinking of a joint committee that is working on intervention designs for next year. So we are very proud of the progress we've made with MTSS during first semester. And there are many staff members working in different ways to build out our MTSS framework. As a reminder, MTSS is a framework for organizing schools for continuous improvement that is meant to be systemic, sustainable and data-informed. It is not a program. It is an operating philosophy for a school. And it includes our ESPs, our student services staff, our teaching staff and our administrative staff. The MTSS framework is designed to help our schools create happier, healthier and higher achieving students by addressing students' academic, SEL and post-secondary planning needs. So in developing our framework, we in D one twenty eight are researching national and local models. And then what we're doing is identifying best practices, which we then work to adapt to our D one twenty eight system. So this graphic here kind of shows how MTSS, the bottom left is what many people think of MTSS and that is our tier, our three-tiered intervention structure. And so that's kind of the thing that a lot of people know about is you think about tier one interventions and tier two. Those are certainly important, but there's much more to a true MTSS framework. And our district work has been targeting all areas this semester. So, you know, we kind of showed some of the highlights of our work and attached them to the different areas of MTSS domains that this work is sort of building out. But just to highlight two things tonight, I want to I want to commend the groups that have formed the three new system-level teams. So we have a district MTSS team that looks at student outcomes across the district. We have a building MTSS team at both Vernon Hills and Libertyville, which are looking at student outcomes at Libertyville and Vernon Hills. And these include cross-disciplinary representation of teachers and staff members from the broadest aspects of the buildings in the district. These teams meet regularly in order to look at data and to assess areas in our system in need of attention. During first semester, student performance data protocols were established, practiced and refined, as well as student success criteria that would help us understand which students were in need of intervention and which students were operating successfully. And also, I just want to say that though it's difficult for us to capture in quantitative data, we have made very strong efforts in growing our culture of database decision-making throughout the district. Through our luncheon learns, our LST meetings, our institute days like EdX and our building meetings and departmental conversations, our staff is more frequently interacting with student performance data in a variety of ways. And we are building our skills and our confidence and our protocols for how to use student data in all of our inquiry processes. When we look at student grades, last winter and spring, D one twenty eight schools implemented new heterogeneous college prep courses at the ninth grade level. And there were concerns raised about how successful students would be in these classes. And though we had designed the ninth grade lab as a means of supporting students in these courses, it was unclear if our students would be successful in this new model. And as a reminder, the ninth grade heterogeneous classes, these were created as an alternative to team-taught classes at the freshman level in biology, algebra and English Lit and comp. We were concerned about team-taught as a model that didn't consistently provide students with the same level of rigor that students encountered in our non-team-taught classes. And therefore, as a district who wanted to raise student outcomes, we developed a heterogeneous model to ensure all students in college prep courses received the same rigorous on-grade level instruction as their peers. In, at that time, additional concerns were voiced about the impact of the district's implementation of APA. Specifically, concerns were voiced that many incoming ninth grade students did not fully understand the APA guidelines. And we would potentially see a large number of students struggle and fail ninth grade honors and AP courses because they might not have been ready for the rigor that was going to be presented to them. So we looked at this at the progress period, but as the dust settles on first semester, we can now see how our ninth graders did academically. A review of all students' grades, when you take all the heterogeneous classes in the AP honors courses at the ninth grade level, shows that despite these substantive changes to ninth grade curriculum, our ninth grade students' academic performance closely mirrored the performance of the class the year before. So while those of us who work with data know that it's difficult to draw conclusions with only one year of data, we can at least be satisfied as a board and as a district, knowing the worst-case scenarios that were presented last year did not manifest themselves at our freshman level. The vast majority of our ninth grade students were successful first semester. They remained in the courses they originally signed up for. This is certainly a testament to the talents of our staff in adapting to these changes, to the grit and the determination of our students to be successful, as well as to the supports provided by our academic interventions. Moving forward, we will continue the heterogeneous courses at the ninth grade level and we will continue to fine-tune the academic supports available to students across the curriculum, including the AP and honors classes. We also heard concerns last year about our upperclassmen. So with the APA, we had a lot of students diagonally moving into their first honors or AP class. And concern was voiced that we may not be, that these students may not be successful. So again, when we review all student course grades from last year to this year, we see the grade distribution is nearly identical in our upperclassmen to what it was the previous year. Though the APA policies were in place, these new placement guidelines did not appear to impact the overall grade distribution of our students. Again, this is a testament to our teachers and our students. And I really do want to stop here for a moment to highlight two things. One is that through the feedback we got last year from our staff, our community and our students, we did make changes to our APA process this year that helped create more teacher voice in that process, as well as include multiple points of data for students. So we think we're only going to have a better kind of placement process moving forward next year. But secondly, I do think it's worth us talking about the fact that this data is a true celebration for District one twenty eight. Because as a school district, we are meeting one of our goals of helping more students challenge themselves academically by enrolling in more rigorous courses for themselves. And though we have more students than ever doing that, our overall grade distributions remains nearly the same as the year before. And so again, this doesn't happen without an extraordinary teaching staff, an extraordinary amount of work by our students and a commitment of our larger school system to support our students as they make these diagonal moves and they challenge themselves. So our data is showing that we are on the right track. And with continued fine-tuning of our academic of our academic interventions and staff professional learning and support, we believe we will grow more successful in the future. I want to next highlight an exciting committee that has been working this semester. When we celebrate the work of our students and staff, we wanted to verify and ensure that our academic intervention systems we were creating were having a positive impact on student outcomes. And so, this past fall, we agreed to a joint committee with the ESP union, the teacher union, and Building and District Administration to gather to review the District 128 Academic Intervention Model, assess student learning outcomes, and develop ideas and recommendations for how this model could be structured moving forward. So, the committee was composed of representatives from all of those groups. We met weekly during January and February, and I have to say, the vibe of this committee was extremely positive and cooperative, with everyone working together to identify what was best for student learning and what would support staff efforts. The committee concluded its work by bringing forward a number of ideas of how academic interventions might be improved and supported moving forward. And at this time, there have been no final decisions yet about what designs will be implemented because we still need to conduct our district staffing process, and we need to continue the collaborative discussions we're having with the leadership of our teacher and our ESP unions about the various nuances and design variations, and the impact that those nuances would have upon their membership. But, even though the committee generated several different ideas, I want to highlight just kind of some of the broader themes that the committee is sort of recommending as direction forward. So, at the Tier One level, the committee recognized really strong work in the MASH and ARC and VHS peer tutoring, but saw data that indicated the number-one need our students have for drop-in support is in math. And so, the committee has recommended and kind of thought of ways that ESP support could be expanded to increase math support for students at the Tier One level. At the Tier Two level, the committee determined that there is a need for differentiated instruction and reteaching to students who are struggling to demonstrate course-level proficiency. And as the committee reviewed different models, it suggested that the resources allocated for the Extension Lab might be better utilized during the school day because all students then would be available to receive them, rather than in the morning before school when some students have transportation issues, or, as we heard from our student panel tonight, those early-before-school meetings are tough for the teenage circadian rhythms to always make on a regular basis. Therefore, while the committee was exploring options, one model that was designed was English and Math and Science Departments implementing interventionist positions, which would be utilized to support students and teachers in classes with the most need of support. So, though this is still in discussion, the job of the interventionist would likely be designed to have a caseload of students and to work to design differentiated lessons and to reteach activities to help students reach proficiency on important course-level skills and content knowledge. In addition to these interventionist positions, we are also looking at how TAs can be utilized in classrooms to support student learning and the delivery of important teacher activities. And we are also... The committee is also recommending the continuation of the Executive Functioning Coaching Positions, which is an ESP position that has demonstrated success at both buildings. Then finally, at the Tier Three level, the committee found that our schools' Paws Literacy and Numeracy programs were working quite well to support our students, but there was a recommendation that, if possible, these interventions be designed to share space so that teachers who work in these interventions and students who need multiple interventions would not have to lose time moving back and forth across the building to get to these different interventions, but it would sort of be kind of like one-stop shopping. The interventions would all be in a very similar location geographically, which would make the efficiency of the delivery much better. So, at this time, I want to reiterate that there is an active and ongoing process where administration is looking at all of our student and building needs, and then we're working collaboratively with our teacher union and ESP union to develop a final plan that incorporates some of these ideas, as well as others, to meet our students, staff, and district needs. All of the final recommendations from this work will be presented to our district and our school board as part of our staffing plan that will be presented to you as a Board in March. And just to wrap up, for second semester and into the summer, we look ahead. These are the following actions that are being taken across the district, and I'm confident with the strong collaboration continuing between administration, teachers, and ESP staff, as well as our continued focus. We will enter next school year with an MTSS system and procedures that are only more effective at meeting the diverse needs of our students. So, thank you.
And unless I forgot anything else, that actually ends the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Tom. Any comments or questions from the Board? Okay, moving on. Now, we get to the Consent Vote Agenda. And we didn't have anything that anyone wanted to pull out, so we'll need a motion in a second, please.
Carmichael, move to approve the Consent Vote Agenda.
Hessel, second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. We have a few other action items here. We have employment of employees. These are a few employees hired after the committee meeting, so we didn't get a chance to discuss them in detail, but we've had this information for a bit of time here. So, can I have a motion to accept the employment of employees as presented?
Carmichael, move to approve the employee... Employment items listed.
Drumkey. Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. We're up to the 10-month and 12-month Administrator contracts. Would anyone...
I have to ask a question. Forgive me. In just reviewing this, the trip to Senegal that was discussed at P&amp;P, I thought was on this agenda for approval tonight.
It was in the consent.
It was in the consent. My bad.
Yeah.
That's what happens. So, reading is a skill. And my apologies.
We've got a great MTSS system. It's an easy... When we do it in two different places, it's easy to miss.
Okay. So, we're at the Administrator contracts. Anyone have any comments or questions or want to move anything out of this?
I have the... So, the memo is posted and that I've shared with you, and we are presenting our 10-month administrative contracts. Two years ago, we reviewed the structure of these 10-month administrative contracts. Again, their contracts are annual yearly contracts. They're based upon the teacher's salary schedule and also include a boosted part for their administrative role. Again, these 10-month contracts are one-year contracts. Our 12-month administrators, last year, we reviewed the structure of the salaries and the raises for our 12-month administrative staff due to a couple of reasons. Number one, looking at laws that were in place that we have to have starting salaries for our 12-month administrators, but then also looking at, you know, what the... Their salaries are based off of comparable school districts. And so, the raises for the 12-month and the new contracts... So, again, our 12-month administrators are on multi-year contracts, so some are still under contract or might be in their second or their third year of a three-year contract. And so, we're recommending their raises for those, and then we do have contracts listed there in the memo for some of our 12-month staff.
Okay. Questions, comments?
I'd like to separate, if we can, the Director of Equity Inclusion from the...
From the back? Okay. Okay, well, we'll do that next, then. Anything else?
Move to approve the 10-month and 12-month administrative contracts and salary increases as presented, with the exception of the Director of Equity and Inclusion. Carmichael, sorry.
Anyone want a second?
Colcarney, second.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any other questions or comments? We have a roll call, please.
Carmichael, move to approve the employee... Employment items listed.
Drumkey. Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. We're up to the 10-month and 12-month Administrator contracts. Would anyone...
I have to ask a question. Forgive me. In just reviewing this, the trip to Senegal that was discussed at P&amp;P, I thought was on this agenda for approval tonight.
It was in the consent.
It was in the consent. My bad.
Yeah.
That's what happens. So, reading is a skill. And my apologies.
We've got a great MTSS system. It's an easy... When we do it in two different places, it's easy to miss.
Okay. So, we're at the Administrator contracts. Anyone have any comments or questions or want to move anything out of this?
I have the... So, the memo is posted and that I've shared with you, and we are presenting our 10-month administrative contracts. Two years ago, we reviewed the structure of these 10-month administrative contracts. Again, their contracts are annual yearly contracts. They're based upon the teacher's salary schedule and also include a boosted part for their administrative role. Again, these 10-month contracts are one-year contracts. Our 12-month administrators, last year, we reviewed the structure of the salaries and the raises for our 12-month administrative staff due to a couple of reasons. Number one, looking at laws that were in place that we have to have starting salaries for our 12-month administrators, but then also looking at, you know, what the... Their salaries are based off of comparable school districts. And so, the raises for the 12-month and the new contracts... So, again, our 12-month administrators are on multi-year contracts, so some are still under contract or might be in their second or their third year of a three-year contract. And so, we're recommending their raises for those, and then we do have contracts listed there in the memo for some of our 12-month staff.
Okay. Questions, comments?
I'd like to separate, if we can, the Director of Equity Inclusion from the...
From the back? Okay. Okay, well, we'll do that next, then. Anything else?
Move to approve the 10-month and 12-month administrative contracts and salary increases as presented, with the exception of the Director of Equity and Inclusion. Carmichael, sorry.
Anyone want a second?
Colcarney, second.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any other questions or comments? We have a roll call, please.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Excuse me. Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Can we have a motion to approve the contract for the Director of Equity and Inclusion?
Carmichael, so moved.
Benjamin, second.
Okay. Let me know when you're ready, Carol.
Colcarney. Excuse me.
Oh, is there a discussion?
Yeah. Any comments, questions, discussion?
You know, since I asked to have it separated, I'll start. My biggest concern is that any vote will indicate some kind of a value placed on the work that the district is doing towards equity and inclusion, and that is not my intent. I have at the creation of this position, and I value the work that the district has done at the building level. My question has always been, is a district administrator the best way to implement the good work that's going on in the buildings? And I have not been convinced that that is the best implementation. So, for that reason, I wanted to have it separated. This is in no way to say a lack of support of our policy or our goals in this area, but...
Leo?
I'd like to echo what Cara said, and that is, I absolutely believe in diversity, equity, and inclusion. Every person that walks through these buildings has to be celebrated, and we have to help them be their best self. I'm not convinced that the position as designed has returned the return of investment that I was hoping in the manner that I was hoping, and that's why I would also like to pull it out.
Yeah. And just to be clear from my perspective, the reason it's still here is to give our incoming superintendent an opportunity to review the makeup of the administrative team, the district administrative team, and to allow him the opportunity to make the adjustments without us second-guessing that ahead of that. So, there's plenty of activity and work to be done, and how he chooses to potentially reorganize that is purely up to him. And so, I, you know, I appreciate both of your comments and how, you know, we should and he should take a look at the best... What's best for the district, what's best for us moving forward, so...
Well, one other... I'm sorry.
No, I mean, I would echo the comments from Cara and Sonal, and this has nothing to do with the, you know, the values of DEI or what's going on in the political environment or anything around us. I think districts should always strive to make schools to be a safe and inclusive place for every single person. So, that value should... This has nothing to do with that statement. I think this is just purely what's the best implementation of this position, and that's the thing that we are seeing everywhere, that it's not as much as the DEI is failing, it's the implementation and how people are interpreting it. So, my vote is more towards looking at this and seeing, like, what's the best place to do this and how we implement it.
While I agree with you that it may not be the best implementation, I don't think that it's prudent for us to pull the rug out from under our incoming superintendent while that work is going on in the building right now, and it will have to continue next year. And so, I think that we are putting a stranglehold on the new superintendent, that we are making it more difficult for the building-level leadership to have to continue work that is important. We have all agreed that that work is important. I think that it's much better to allow the incoming superintendent the opportunity to restructure as that superintendent sees fit.
I also believe that this was the recommendation of our current administration.
It was the recommendation of our current administration.
So, to not approve...
But it was not the recommendation of the committee, and that was one of the things that we discussed together, that one of the reasons that I was convinced to implement this role is because the Equity Committee, made up of teachers, ESP, and administrators, came to us three years ago and asked us for this position, and we did not hear that same call. So, that was kind of where I was, I understand, and the work is going to continue, and the work is important, and the work has been done before we had this position, but to me, that was the most persuasive.
Hypothetically, though, who would absorb this work? Who does it go to? This role is being expanded to include enhanced district safety, and I think our administrative team has enough going on right now, and this role supports the work of so much... Supports the... So much of what we do in the district for our students. So, if we remove a district-level administrator within this role and it goes back to the we are pulling the rug out of someone who we just hired, who made the assumption he was coming to our district with this team of professionals here and assembled and ready to work. What, that, that would be a very odd thing to suddenly remove from beneath him.
We're making a decision for him.
Yeah. He can make this decision in a year. He will see what suits the district best at this time.
I'm, I'm going to offer a slightly different perspective coming from corporate America, who, where these things happen all the time, where I may have a meeting on Monday that says come into the office and I may be out of a job or someone else is. When we bring in leaders with adequate experience and we have a fantastic team of administrators here, I don't believe that having one position less is going to have a huge impact on anyone. We've had our teams here operate fabulously with two missing administrators that were positions that were far more critical.
I disagree with that statement.
We can disagree, but I'm just bringing a different perspective, that when we hire people with experience in leadership, roles can come and go, they figure out how to make things work.
How do you, how do you propose that happens? How's it going to work?
That's not my job. If I can, I'm happy to elaborate, but I don't think I'm a superintendent.
I think you should have, before you suggest not approving this contract, a comprehensive plan as to who's going to absorb that work in the district. How are we going to deliver the same deliverables? In, how many months is it?
Mr. Hessel, this is not a meeting where you get to talk. This is a public meeting held in public. It's our meeting. So if you would please be quiet while we are deliberating.
I think we should probably just go to vote. There is, we have enough agreed to not disagree.
We have a vote, a roll call, please.
Cole Carney.
It's a move, the motion was to approve. We've already moved and seconded.
Cole Carney.
No.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
No.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
No.
Thank you. Moving on. Yeah, motion passes. Thank you. Lost my place here. We are up to the financial reports, audited financial reports. Dan, take it away.
Yep, so we have our fiscal '24 audited reports, that's in there, comprehensive report that has a lot of pages, a lot of information. But that's there. We had our auditor in our committee meeting, last meeting, to kind of walk through a summary level. But I would say overall, it was a, as a board member pointed out, a pretty boring presentation. And so that's what we're looking for in terms of no surprises and pretty straightforward. So again...
Noted with appreciation.
Yeah, very appreciative of our entire system that helps, helps to create work like this from ordering to following all the different laws and rules and everything like that. So it's extremely helpful.
Very, very high rating for the work that you and your team do. That's, that's great. We, we very much appreciate that. Moving on to the next item, the...
We have to move to approve that.
Oh, we have to approve that, I'm sorry.
Hessel, I move to approve the fiscal year '24 annual comprehensive financial report as presented.
Cole Carney, second.
Okay, any further comments, questions? Nope, Dan, roll call, please.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Cole Carney.
Aye.
Motion passes. We have a couple of bid approvals here. Can we have a motion for the VHS asphalt paving, repaving, I should say?
Carmichael, move to approve the Vernon Hills High School asphalt repaving and the LHS concrete work by Trock McNeil Paving Company. Base bids plus alternatives two, three, four, and six for a total cost of $1,400, excuse me, $44,000, excuse me. It's very tiny print. $1,44,160.
Cotwell, second.
Any discussion? These were reviewed earlier, so can we have a roll call, please?
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Cole Carney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye. Motion passes. Bid approval for safety netting at the LHS varsity baseball fields. We don't want broken windows on the cars.
It's very timely. I just drove by them today.
Mm-hmm. Do we have a motion, please?
Drumkey, move to approve the replacement of the safety netting at the LHS baseball varsity field by Bear Construction for a total cost of $52,785.
Carmichael, second.
Any questions or comments, discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Cole Carney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. We have a three-year yearbook agreement. Can we have a motion, please?
Hessel, I move to approve a three-year core and supplemental agreement with varsity yearbooks at an annual price of $64,952.85.
Cole Carney, second.
Any comments, any background?
We did talk at the committee meeting, this is the current product. They just, the vendor upgraded their name, but it's the same vendor basically, and Vernon Hills would like to continue with it. So it's a three-year contract for that.
Okay.
Is the supplement a new portion of the agreement or we always had that supplemental?
The supplement, it's always been part of it. They just, they kind of have their core, which is the basics, and then they have the supplemental was the extra. So that's, that's been part of it since I've been here.
Any other questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Cole Carney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda, the FY mid-year financial review, back to Dan.
Yeah, this is just a report we do to just kind of check on how is the fiscal year progressing? And so on the revenue side, they're pretty close, so I won't spend time there. There's a written report you can read. On the, on the expenditure side, there's kind of really two areas. The most significant is our outplace students. So when we estimate our budget, we do it based on students that we know. These are names and students of where they're going. We have had, due to a variety of reasons of students moving, which happens, students graduating their, their program or taking their diplomas and going, or students reintegrating back into our schools. We've had about five or six students do that. But, but the combination of those, and so we, and the, the cost of outplacing students is quite significant. And so that is having an impact on our expenditures. And so that's trending down by several hundred thousand dollars. And then on the, the other one is on the expenditure side of note, I would say is our 12-month admin is trending a bit higher. But that's full disclosure. I only, back in June when we approved the budget, that was with one superintendent. So we have a different number now. And so that, that'll, that, you know, that's, we understand what's going on there, but that, that's what we're seeing in terms of the trend data. So that, that's really what's happening in the mid-year review. Otherwise, everything else seems to be pretty much on track.
Thank you. Any questions by the board? Appreciate that information. And then similarly, the five-year financial projections?
Yeah, so this normally we would have wanted to do at the committee meeting last time, but we're happy to have it here. So this is a, a look at what, what, what is the district, what's the future for the district in terms of financials? And so, you know, really, one, one thing I want to kind of talk about in terms of what, how this works is, it really is building up each of the assumptions. So we go through each of our revenue sources and what is the projection for that over the next five years? Whether it's property taxes, interest income, other different things, we look at each of those separately over the trajectory. And then separately, we look at our expenditures and I'll talk through that. But we look at each of those independently. And then really at the end, you kind of see what the product is. What you're going to see largely in my assumptions is taking our, what we currently know, our current models and moving them forward. So let's just be transparent. We have a teacher contract being negotiated right now. None of this stuff is about that information. This is basically saying if the current contract was just pushed forward. So all the assumptions and everything in there, it just kind of pushes those forward. So this is what you might call on the expenditure side, kind of a status quo in terms of our system of how that's working. So let me walk through. One of the, one of the ways, oh, yeah. So first of all, I just want to real quick look at what, what were the projections a year ago during this time? And so the year ago, the trends were showing that for FY '25 and '26, things were okay. The surplus a little bit lower than what I recommend. I think we should be at more of a $1 million to 1.1 million in terms of an annual surplus. But then you can see kind of a quick decline there. We're going to, we'll take a look at that, layer that over what the projections show now to kind of get a sense of what's changing. But before we do that, I think it's also helpful to kind of take a pause and look at the last few years and kind of see what's, what's been happening. So again, the past, we're looking at a five-year look back. It's fiscal years '20 to '24, a review of what's happening this year, and then a projection for going forward. That's fiscal year '26 through fiscal year '30. We're into a new decade on the top end. So when we look at just, so we're on the same terms, on the same page when we recall talking about the terms. Our surplus is the difference between the revenues we're bringing in and the money going out. When we're talking about fund balance, that's, that's the fund balance, that's the, the funds left over as a percentage of expenditures. And our trends, when we're talking about revenue trends, how do revenues change over time? How do expenditures change over time? So this is looking back at the last five years and then includes our budget year for this year. So back in '20, in '21, the years that shall not be named, those were our COVID years. And those were, those were very odd years that generated a significant surplus, really because our revenue didn't stop. But, you know, we, when you don't transport students to school every day, that's a big difference. When you shut down for a quarter of the year, that's a big difference in terms of your spending. Then in fiscal year '22, that was our first return to normal year. And that was also the year that we decided to change how we account for our property taxes. So that, I would say is an artificial deficit. So that, that was really because of how we changed our fiscal year reporting. Fiscal year '23 is a $450,000 deficit. That again, I believe, I would say is artificial because that was an intentional, had a 2% COLA stipend that we paid out to all staff to try to help offset the, offset the burden of inflate, high inflation at that time. And so that was approximately a million dollars that we had paid out. So had you not done that, it would have been higher. And then last year, 5.1 million. That was a little surprising. When we did our mid-year review last year, we were trending closer to 3.1, 3.2. And then at the end of the fiscal year, we were looking at 3.1. That's kind of what I was expecting to see. So when I saw the 5.1, that surprised me. When I looked at the details, it's really, I think, two things were happening. One is when I'm reporting to you on our revenues and everything like that, that's actual cash receipts coming in. So that's our interest income that we're actually receiving. When we get to the full accrual, so like the report that was approved tonight, that, 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 those numbers are all full accrual. And so one of the differences is our interest income is reported based on fair market value. We don't receive the funds based on fair market value and we hold them to maturity. So, so that was a difference. So basically it's saying our, our investments were more valuable than the money that was coming in based on fair market value. That's also, so that, that was a little bit different. The second part would be capital, capital outlay. I always try to put a caveat when we're talking about our capital spending because the timing of when those projects happen and when the payments happen can vary significantly. This is an example of when they varied. So when you take into account the full accrual of what was the work done by June 30th, when they took those accruals, that's what also drove that up. So it'll be interesting to see kind of what, what the impact is then to fiscal year '25 after that. So that's 5.1 million for last year. This year, our budget was 800, 870,000 as an operating surplus. But I just, in the previous spread, I kind of told you where we're trending. We're trending closer to 2.2 million is the trend right now for that. So that's the past. Now, also looking at our enrollment, we have been in a period of declining enrollment for the last several years. It does appear that we'll, we'll be declining on average a little bit over the next couple of years, but then we'll look to recover a bit in the future, too. So that's just some data points, big picture data points. Again, there's a written report with more information. So when we're talking about revenue assumptions, let's talk about where do we get our revenues from? The vast majority of our revenues come from property taxes. You're talking 89% of our revenues coming from property taxes, 1%, federal 2%, or call it 4% from the state and things like that. So the biggest driver, key driver in the project, in the math is what is your CPI assumption? So we know the CPI for 2024 and 2025, those have been released. But what we don't know is what are the CPIs going forward? And so I make an educated guess based on the historical trends. But one thing that is important is whatever the CPI assumption is affects our salaries because a lot of them are tied to CPI. And so whatever assumption you use, so you could use 3% in the future, or you could use 2%, that would have a corresponding change to the salary assumptions there. So that's what you see I have projected there. CBPRT is, it's a low, it's technically a, it's a local revenue, but we get it from the state, which is weird to say. It has been very volatile. So we used to get, call it $900,000 a year, and then it jumped to 2.5 million, and then it went to 3 million. And that was extremely surprising. And the question was, is that going to continue? What we saw last year is that it dropped to 2 million. And then this year, it's projected to be closer to probably either 1.3 or 1.5. So it does seem like we're trending further down. So my assumption there is 1.3 going forward, but we really don't know. I highly doubt it's going to go back up. The question is how much further down is it going to go? Interest income also has been very, very volatile over the last several years, largely due to, we're really tied to whatever the Fed rates are and the short-term interest rates. That's where a lot of our interest income is generated from. And so I'm, we have seen rates start to come down. If you're paying, paying attention in the news, you've seen some rates come down over the last couple of months. And so I'm, the question is, is that going to continue? Are rates going to keep going down? Or are they going to stay the flat? Or are they going to go back up? We don't really know. And so I'm assuming we're going to have a kind of a slow, steady decline over the next couple of years here. So that's an important assumption on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, we, the, the most important driver is your staff. So when you look at salaries and benefits, 71% of our budget is on the people that are, that are here. And so what is really important to know is how many people are going to be here and what are you going to pay them, really? So for these projections, I'm showing no FTE changes. Now, that's not saying that's what's going to happen again. This is meant to be a base scenario to show you kind of a status quo with our current structures going forward. So I don't have any FTE changes in there. Other, if there were ones that I knew for sure that were about or something like that, I would have them in there. But right now, that's showing, that's flat. So that you can know that that's what the final result includes this assumption, and that's a very key assumption. The next one is what are the raises? These are, these are the raises that are currently tied to our CPI numbers. And so that, that's really just the simple math. This is not me telling what anything is happening in the future. This is just what the corresponding raises mathematically happening with those CPI assumptions. Another thing is our probably third largest item next to salaries is our medical insurance. We have been experiencing a very difficult last few years in terms of our premium increases. And so that's been very difficult for us to absorb as a system. And so the question is what's going to continue? The nice thing is that our preliminary renewals for next year seem lower, so I've got 4% in there right now. But we'll get our finals in the next couple of months here. But after that, our, our long-term trend really is at about 8% for insurance. And so the question is, you know, what's going to happen there? But you can see what my assumptions are for that. Then in terms of other things, we have other things that happen that are fairly material. One is lane changes. So we have, you know, teachers that move over, they get more education, they move over in a lane. That change has a cost. And so I, I look at a kind of a trend based on that. So lane change is at 180,000. Retiree replacements, we have a lot of retirees over the next several years that we have accounted for those people leaving and an estimate for people being replaced. Post-retirement benefits, our, what our assumption is for new hires based on our historical information. And then 403B contributions, I'm assuming that's flat. Again, that's what our current model is, projecting that forward. The stuff that's non-salary and benefits. So for education fund, based on the trends that we're seeing, 2% to 3% growth is what I'm anticipating. Operations and maintenance has been a little bit higher because our energy costs have been a little bit higher. So operations and maintenance, um, has like a lot of the buildings and electricity, uh, and natural gas, things like that. Transportation is five to six because that is our renewal for the last, for last year was 6%. Our renewal for next year, which was already approved a year ago, is 6% next year. Uh, and so, and then after that, we've historically been around twice what CPI is, uh, for our renewals lately. And so that's what I'm projecting going forward. Capital projects includes the, the finishing of the LHS cafeteria and then our TORT fund, which is our, um, property casualty workers' comp insurance. That has been increasing pretty rapidly. Uh, the last few years have been 10%, and so I've got projected 9% going forward. It's, the dollar amount is still relatively small, uh, but it is something that is growing, um, fairly fast. So what are the results? Again, we're, we're going to look at surplus. What is the operating surplus? The difference between our revenues and expenditures? What's going to happen to our fund balance and what's happening with the trends? So here are the results. The formatting is a little bit different than the prior year, but, um, these are the, these are the results. And really, if you look, they're not actually that much different than what they were a year ago. What I say would, what I would say is changes that fiscal '29 had an, an improvement, significant improvement. And what that was is, uh, we have 18 teachers retiring in '28. So they would be, then be replaced in '29. When we did this a year ago, I didn't know those teachers. And, and even now, in fiscal '20, in fiscal '30, I know it won't be that because between now and May 1st, we're going to have a group of teachers tell us that they intend to retire in 2029. So once, once I know who those are, then we'll be able to plug it in. So I don't think 2030, and I hopefully have always said this, I'm not worried about five years from now. What I'm worried about is the overall trend of where this is heading. And, yeah, but other than that, uh, it, the numbers are fairly similar to what we've seen. And so we're just now a year closer to all of that happening. So, um, what, what happens in terms of our fund balance? Well, if we take into account our, our LHS cafeteria project, our projected fund balance, based on those assumptions, we're going to start to dip below that 25% come fiscal year '27. And so the fund balance percentage is, if you think about it, how much cash do you have in the bank? You know, 25% is basically saying, do I have three months, uh, three months of spending in the bank is really the idea. And that's, that's a measure of financial health. And so if that's declining and our board policy is at 25%, that's something that we'll have to watch as well. In terms of trends, like why do those things happen? On a year-to-year basis, what it means is your, your change in revenues is not keeping pace with your change in expenditures. So there's very, very little the board has control of in terms of your, your revenues. You decide your tax levy, you decide your student fees, but pretty much everything else, other than investment income, you have some flexibility there. But otherwise, you're kind of given what you're given. There's not much choice you have. So, uh, the control you have is on your expenditure side. So when you look at the trends, if you look at revenues for the next three years, 3.1, 3%, 1.9. Next year, it's at 3.2, that's slightly outpacing. Now it's at 3.4, that's even more outpacing, and then 3.2 continues to outpace. So the long-term outpacing of the growth of expenditures versus your growth in revenues, that's what causes this. And so, um, at that point, you really have, um, a few options. You either try to get more revenue, or you try to slow it out, you try to increase the rate of revenue increases that you're going to get. Or you try to slow down the rate of increase on the expenditure side. So in terms of recommendations, from my perspective, um, from the financial perspective, these are the exact same as last year. We need to try to slow down the increases where it's controllable. So that's talking about your staffing, that's talking about your department budgets. Be cautious of adding annual operating costs. So one-time costs are different. When you're talking about something that you're going to spend every year, you need to be cautious of that because you're running out of the ability to just add more things and not take something else away. The math is just not going to work. Uh, and the third one is to look at systemic changes. So if there are things that you can have in terms of your structure. So I've seen you, the, I've shown you the results of our structures, I believe, um, are not sustainable in terms of keeping our surplus at a certain level, keeping our fund balance at a healthy level. The trend is in the wrong direction. I would love to show you that the trend is in the right direction, but I'm trying to be as faithful I can to the process and the, and the, and the projections. So that's the information that I have on the projections. I, again, I would say it's very, very similar to what was last year. So there's not a major change in terms of where our trajectory is. Um, so with that, I just want to say thank you. And then there's a written report with a lot more information in there as well.
Yeah. Thank you, Dan. It's, um, it's very helpful to see that, that five-year projection so that we can know what's, what's potentially in the future and start addressing it sooner than later. Otherwise, we wait too long and of course, things have a much more significant impact. So, uh, we appreciate that. It seems like we've had this track record of being able to figure it out, to keep on a, on a, uh, uh, even keel for so many years. But at some point in time, there may be some additional changes that have to take place. So we'll, uh, continue to consider those and, uh, appreciate your information.
Uh, I have kind of one question. I mean, I will not be here when you answer this, but I hope that when you, when you present your next year's budget and going forward, really identify tangible changes that the new board can start making so your deficit in the future starts to come down. At least try to be a zero, if not plus. Uh, and as you said, there is, and I've, I've used your phrase very generously at work. It's the forever money versus the one-time money. And the forever money really needs to start shrinking if you don't want to get in trouble later. So I hope that I'll be watching online and hope you'll have those recommendations.
Other comments?
Dan, would you mind just going back to the budgeted revenue source pie chart?
Sure.
And would you mind just briefly going over those categories, starting with the federal?
Federal is 1%. Um, so if you're doing the math, that's roughly 1.6 million. Evidence-based funding is about 2.1 million. Other state is about the same. Other local, um, well, CBPRT is kind of a million and a half. Other local is probably closer to 3 million. And then you're talking the rest of the bulk is property taxes, um, 90 million plus for sure. The exact number, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head.
That's okay. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Okay. Thank you again, Dan. Moving on, um, just general board comments and events.
So I had just a super brief update. Um, we are participating in a social media litigation, um, along with a thousand other districts across the country. It's a federal suit. Um, and this webinar last week was an update led by William Shinoff of the Franz Law Group in California, where the suit was filed in federal court. Um, just as a very brief reminder, in June 2023, the board adopted a resolution to participate at no cost to the district in a multi-district suit against social media companies for the harm they knowingly caused children. The suit was filed in federal and state courts seeking both monetary damages and more importantly, changes to their practices. As I mentioned, there are over a thousand districts participating in the suit nationally now, including 75 here in Illinois. We will only participate in paying legal fees if we accept a monetary settlement. And it will be our decision whether or not to accept a monetary settlement, um, if we get to that point. Um, the defendant's motion to dismiss has been rejected. The, uh, lawyers are wrapping up discovery this month, and towards the end of the summer, the first trial dates will be set. Um, platiff's counsel, our counsel, has been deposing up the chain of command at Meta, Snap, TikTok, and YouTube, and will depose their CEOs beginning in May of this year. During the '25, '26 school year, we'll continue to see the closing of discovery and setting of trial dates. So in terms of next steps, our district may be contacted by Franzic, who is the local counsel, to provide two additional pieces of data. Uh, we should be hearing from them this week if that's necessary, and they sounded to be very general pieces of information that will not be a heavy lift for our administrators. I'm looking at you, Bryant. And then there's a possibility of a docu-sign to move our case from state to federal court. I don't think we were one of the districts that was filed in state court, but if we were, they're just going to need a docu-sign to move us to the federal action. And that is the update on our social media litigation.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any comments? I'll just make a couple of quick things. I, I did attend a webinar that I think will be, um, at least helpful to me. It relates to onboarding of new school board members. Uh, it was, um, put on by the Illinois Association of School Board. So that was an interesting webinar and gave some, uh, some ideas for interacting with those new board members. I attended a tech conference last, an educational tech conference, IdeaCon. Uh, just the, just earlier this week, or last week, I guess, Wednesday of last week. Always interesting to see what, uh, new and different things are, are being done in the world of technology and education. So. Moving on, IASB report. I'll remind folks that if they want to attend and haven't signed up already, the, uh, Lakes Division meeting comes up on the 12th of March. Uh, if you'd like to attend that and haven't done so yet, I'll let Carol know. She can sign you up for that. And I'll probably have some more information next month, uh, prior to my attending the National School Board Conference later in March. So. Um, and nothing from CEDO. We have some future agenda items listed there in the, uh, in the board docs. As always, if you have additional things you'd like to address at one of these meetings, uh, let us know. And if there's nothing else, we have a motion to adjourn.
Drumkey, so moved?
Carmichael, second.
Roll call, please.
Could you say?
Oh, voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I know you're going to.
Not yet.
Thank, thank you all for attending.